Welcome to Politics Not Included, where we get to know the person, not their policy. We're creating a space to have real conversations with your elected officials and election candidates to get to know them as a person first. We're hoping these conversations will make it easier to approach and engage your local leadership. Now, before we get started with today's episode, I have a couple of ground rules to cover as always. The first is Politics Not Included is hosted by the Transparent Campaign Initiative. And in the spirit of transparency, these episodes will be published without being edited. And we're doing this to keep this platform neutral and authentic to all of the guests that we have on the show. Now, what that means for you as a listener or a viewer, if you're on our YouTube channel, is that you may witness or hear longer pauses than anticipated or some bloopers or stumbling over words. And that's because you're watching or listening to this conversation as if it were live. You're hearing the whole thing in its entirety. And I'm excited to get to share these conversations with you in a true and authentic form. And that leads me to rule number two, that as you're watching or listening to this, if you have any comments that creep up in your head that if you were sitting in this room with us, you may not have the confidence to say to our face, or you may not feel like the best human being if you did. I'm going to ask you to keep that in your head and out of the comments. And that's because we're just trying to have conversations to get to strengthen our community and to build each other up rather than tear each other down. And in order to do that, I think we need to keep the comments kind. Now that all of that is out of the way, let's get this show started. Just one note before we get started with today's episode. All Manhattan City Commission candidates have been invited to appear as a guest on Politics Not Included. On today's episode, we welcome Jamie Mitten. Jamie is the Sales, Home Health and Support Services Director of Meadowlark. She is also a Manhattan City Commissioner seeking reelection this November. Jamie, welcome to Politics Not Included.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I'm excited to be here.
Yeah, I'm excited to get to know you a little bit better and dive into some of your experiences. So let's go back to the beginning of your kind of start of your career. You have a bachelor's in sociology and a minor in anthropology. What about that discipline drew you to pursue that?
Well, I started at K-State as pre-med and did a lot of that curriculum and biology pre-med. And then realized that was not necessarily the path for me and found that I really enjoyed sociology. I'm also somebody who is excited to like move on to the next thing and was excited to be done with college and that one fit and worked through that fairly quickly. Because I don't know why at the time I was so excited to get into the workforce.
Your paycheck.
In retrospect, probably should have been like, oh, I could have slowed that down a little bit. But yeah, just really enjoyed kind of the study of people as a society and some of that behavior that goes along with it and found that intriguing and went that route.
What is anthropology? Does that fit into the sociology umbrella?
It does. It's the study, I'm probably gonna botch this for anyone who's a true anthropologist, so I'll apologize in advance. It is the study of other cultures as a whole group of individuals, as a population of current cultures. So most people who are anthropologists would be traveling abroad and studying in a different way, not staying in the town where they got their same degree from. But it's a very fascinating thing. One of the professors, Michael Lesch at K-State, who's gained a lot of fame and popularity for a lot of his studies, which is well deserved, was one of my first professors and had a good impact on me, and so I enjoyed his classes.
Yeah, that's really interesting. You get exposed to something and you're like, I didn't know about this, but I want to do it.
I never knew. So I call like jobs, certain careers ornament careers because they're like, what is on a Christmas ornament? I think of that like doctors, nurses, police officers, teachers. And so those were the careers as a child that we were more exposed to. And so I hadn't really heard of sociology or anthropology, like that wasn't a thing. Statisticians, like that wasn't something you talked about in school. And so going to college opened up my eyes to a lot of different options.
Yeah, that's a really good explanation of an ornament on a Christmas tree.
Yeah, I'm so, I mean, I would love to see one that is retirement community employee, but they don't have one.
You could make your own.
I'll have to make my own.
And while you're at K-State, you were on the rowing team, right?
So I was on the club rowing team. And it was myself when I first started, well, I was taking care of a woman in town. Her husband was Don Rose, who's very famous rowing coach. He's since passed, but I was one of their in-home caregivers. And he thought I was a strong lady and thought I should go out for the rowing team. And so I really just went out for the club team just to get him to stop asking me to do it and kind of fell in love with it and did that. It's actually where I met my husband at the boathouse. He coached the high school rowing team at the time and I was on the club team. So it was myself and a bunch of guys and I had to earn my way into a boat. And it was fun, definitely not as serious as the actual collegiate rowing team.
Yeah, still sounds like a really cool experience.
Yeah, it was. And it was a great workout, like learn something new. Never thought I would ever do that, not the biggest fan of water even.
Oh, really?
No, like stepping into a boat is scary, flipping a boat is a little scary.
Yeah, I can imagine.
And we did that a few times and then learned to row a single and a double and pairs. Like, yeah, it was fun. It was a fun experience in college and found a great group of people.
Yeah, that's awesome. And then you graduated from K-State and then did you start working for Meadowlark immediately after graduation?
No, I was actually supposed to leave. When I graduated from K-State, I was supposed to leave and go to upstate New York and work at a children's camp up there that I had worked at through college. I had worked there over the summers. And I graduated at semester. And so I started working at Job Corps, working nights there as a resident supervisor. And was there probably about a year and a half before I decided I wanted a daytime job. And yeah, moved over, found Meadowlark and moved over there.
And how long have you been at Meadowlark now?
About 15, just celebrating my 15th anniversary there.
And you started, because now you're the director of, this is a really long name, so I'm not gonna say it.
It is such a long name and we've tried like many times to capture it. An operations director, so there's two operations directors really. And then we have some other directors as well. That's what it is. But when I started there, I'd been in my current role probably about 10 years. It ebbs and flows and changes, which is one of the things that I love most about Meadowlark is that we can really make those positions our own by like bringing what we love to the job. But when I first started, I think my technical job title was Executive Assistant to the CEO's Executive Assistant. So I was the assistant's assistant and just tried to learn and suck up as much information as I possibly could.
And then have since moved your self into different roles.
I just jumped around into whatever role was needed. And I love to learn new things and that really met me where I was. So it's great.
And you also have a family, right?
I do have a family.
Tell us a little bit about your family.
So my husband and I have been married 15 years almost. We'll celebrate our anniversary next month. Oh, no, this month. It's already September. So we'll celebrate that like next week. And then we have a teenage son. He's great and wonderful. He's also a teenager, so I say that with like a grain of salt there. No, we spend a lot of our time really chasing him around. He's real into athletics and so everything from football, baseball, wrestling, track, we're kind of doing it all. Yeah, and then fortunately, my in-laws live in town and then my parents do not live very far. They're in Lawrence. And so it's been really great having family that close.
Yeah, that is awesome to have everybody around.
It is great. I don't know how individuals with more than one child can do it. I have to give people a lot of credit because we significantly outnumber our child. So there's my husband and I, his parents, my parents. And we still sometimes are like having to borrow rides from people and carpool and really try to figure out a way to get him to all of the things and get us to all of the things.
Yeah, it sounds like you're a really busy family, so that supports the system.
We stay busy. Yeah.
And what does Rowan, right?
Yeah, Rowan is his name.
What does he think about you being a city commissioner?
Honestly, he's pretty indifferent to it. I think he thinks it's funny when he sees my picture on things. His friends all tease. We were at Purple Power Play this weekend and like I had a whole, my son wasn't there. He was at another friend's house. But I had a whole gaggle of teenage boys just like hitting up our booth. And like they were behind it and they were eating all the candy. And so they all think it's funny and they walk around with like my little picture cards and stuff. But yeah, he, you know, generally speaking, it doesn't impact him. I think like today it was, hey mom, will I see you before the meeting, after the meeting, those kinds of things. So.
Yeah. So what's a day in the life, you're a mom, you work a full-time job. What's a day in the life look like as Jamie versus a day in the life as Commissioner Mitten? Or is it all bleed together?
It so bleeds together. So like forever, people have said like, oh, how do you have work-life balance? Or how do you keep like work at home and home at, no, work at work and home at home? And that's just never been been the the method for me. Everything kind of bleeds together. I'm really fortunate that I have a, I work for an organization that supports me on the commission and me as a parent and me as a spouse, so that we can be flexible with things. So it it all blurs together. Some nights it's me sitting on my couch doing work, some nights we're playing games, some nights we're running to different things. If it wasn't for technology and having a phone with me all the time, I wouldn't be able to do all of all of the things. But yeah, it all just bleeds together.
Yeah, and now you've added running a campaign on top of that.
So and that has added, I think, a lot of probably more guilt than anything of never feeling like we're doing enough for the campaign, never talking to enough people, never getting out there enough of, you have, you know, different opportunities and things we get invited to, which are wonderful. Sometimes there's just not enough physical time in the day. And then one thing I've kind of learned over the past year or so is that everything can't be my number one priority for things and I can't be involved and significantly invested in everything. So there are different organizations that I'm like, oh, I wish I could volunteer for that. Or I support them and knowing that I just can't, I can't give myself fully to all the different things and still do the job the way I want it to be done.
Yeah, that's a really tough balance and a great skill to master. And I feel like it's really hard to master.
Oh, I have not mastered that.
I'm not saying I haven't either, but you know, like it sounds like you're very mindful of it in making decisions because everything you say yes to is something that you're taking yourself away from and.
It is. And I used to feel like, and I still do this to myself and I'll box myself. Like if I have a spot open on the calendar, I'm like, oh, I can fill that with something. But then I don't always give myself the time I need for prepping for that. Whether that's like figuring out dinner for my family, which to be honest, that's my husband. He figures out that. He's wonderful, super supportive and has always been that way. But it's it's anything from that to like prepping for the meetings and making sure I have enough time for commission meetings, you know, and not just trying to schedule myself that every minute of the day is busy.
Yeah. And so to get into some of your history as a commissioner and like where you are now. So you were appointed to the commission. Like what was that process like? Because I'm not familiar with that at all.
I don't think a lot of people were. I wasn't familiar with what, how it would happen. Just to backtrack, I thought about running in 2023 and was interested in running. At the time, my husband was testing to be a captain in his position. And that was a very all-encompassing sort of environment for us. And that was everything from him studying. We would do flashcards together. It was it was kind of a family thing. And that process went on during that same time. And so there was no way we would have been able to work a campaign into that. And also with where my my son was age-wise, had, I was coaching his baseball team at the time. There were just too many other things that it wasn't the right time. And then I'll call it an opportunity presented itself, which which may be a harsh way to look at how I got appointed. When when Butler resigned, it was, I had had some individuals, Annie Pease, who I work with. She came to me and said, I think you need to do it this time. And I didn't, I didn't know what that would entail. I was nervous. And I just started talking to as many people as I could. Actually, Annie was kind of my quasi, we say campaign manager. She was super helpful. And really, I just had people who were emailing other people and saying, please email the commissioners. I didn't know the other commissioners. I think I had met Peter one time, talking about indoor, indoor water parks and rec, those sort of things. We had had a conversation about that, but other than that, I hadn't met them. And so tried to get in front of all of them, met with different groups. And it was a very aggressive, like two-week push. And I just remember it was right around Memorial Day and my niece was graduating. And so I'm trying to get to Tulsa to go watch her graduate. And so it was a like 24-hour trip to Tulsa and back because I had these other meetings scheduled to meet with people and talk about city commission. And I I remember sitting in the in the audience that night at the meeting. And I just remember thinking like, you know, I just want them to give consideration to my name. And Peter was the one who actually nominated me. There was other nominations that had failed that night. And Peter said my name and my husband and I, we were like, well, you know, at least my name was brought up. So we thought it was gonna like, it would maybe get a vote or two and then be shot down. And so when it got three votes, it was like, I, I don't think I was breathing. And I was like, all of a sudden I had this like, do I want to do this moment? Which was, and I had those moments for the next about week and a half until I was sworn in or two weeks before I was sworn in of like, what are you doing? What are you doing? And it's it's worked out. I jumped right in. I actually think starting during budget season was a great way for me to understand things that were going on. And I just, I just dove in.
Yeah, if you're starting in the middle of like budgets, drinking from a water hose, just like.
Very much so. But that's honestly, I think like, I think had I started, and I think about this with our whole process, when new commissioners start in January, yes, they've been like tracking some of the budget stuff, but not diving in. I can't imagine trying to make decisions at the first of the year without knowing all of that information and really knowing it. It's one thing to have a surface level, but to really jump in and go line by line through that and ask all of the questions. I think it worked out great for just the way I learned.
And for the appointment, did you send in like an application and then they reviewed it or?
There wasn't really an application process for that. I believe at the time, so Susan Adamcheck had just been appointed as mayor as part of Wynn's resignation. And it was decided that they would each bring forth candidates that they thought would do a good job. And so immediately then it was like reach out to the commissioners, talk with them, see, you know, if they have any interest, those sort of things. That was the, it was very much done in person. I sent them my resume and like why I thought I would be a good fit. And then there were a handful of other individuals who some of us met beforehand too to say like, hey, what's your motivation here? Let's talk through. And actually met some really great people who were also interested in stepping up if nobody else did.
Yeah, and it sounds like you got, you were kind of primed and your family was primed for you to step into this role. Were there conversations that was like, should I do this? Or like, what are the things that your family had to consider? And then be able to dive too far in that.
No, no, it's fine. It was, it was stressful because it was so fast in things. It helped that we had had a conversation for 2023. And I remember we went out to breakfast with my in-laws. And I, I finally, I felt like I was pulling a Band-Aid off. And I just said like, I think I'm throwing my name in for the hat. And I wanted to see that reaction without a lot of discussion and they were just excited. And that was to me very affirming for me of like, okay, I'm doing the right thing. I can't, you know, say that Rowan and my husband Cole are, they are very supportive. You know, it's, it is tough though, because we, we don't get as much time together. There's always like some other pool, so there's a good balance. Thankfully, that's kind of always how our life has been. My husband is a fireman and so with his schedule, it's a little bit different. And I couldn't have done this younger because when our son was younger, it would have been much more challenging than it is now. But they were, they were very supportive.
Yeah, that's great. And so you've done interviews in the past. And the first one that I found was in the Manhattan Mercury in May of 2024. And you know, the, these elections, so you're running for a nonpartisan election. But it seems like one of the common things that gets asked of candidates is like, what's your party affiliation? But you've really held the ground of this is not relevant to this race and so I'm not going to say.
Correct.
Why is that stance important to you?
So I think it's important because a city commission, our commission, it's not about politics. Honestly, I'm, I don't consider myself a politician at all because we're not advocating for one group's feelings, opinions, needs over a different group. We are here to look at the city as a whole. We're not represented even by districts or other interest groups or anything like that. We are just here to see the city as a whole. And so I think it's incredibly important that we don't bring politics into it. It's one of the reasons why I love the title of your podcast. Like it's not, it's not about politics. It's just about the city of Manhattan. And I think that that's incredibly important.
And so that first interview was when you were a part of the commission. And then so now you're going into a campaign. Is that still the stance that you take moving forward?
Absolutely, absolutely still the stance. When they, that was the very first interview, like you said. And I remember at first when they called me, I said no, because I didn't know what like, it was like, I didn't know what to do. And I actually then like, I called my husband. I'm like, they want to interview me and like, I just don't know that that's appropriate. Like I haven't even started yet. And he was like, people want to know who you are. Just do the interview. And I did. And so it's just, like I said, I've just never considered myself a politician. Although like our government is incredibly important to me. Politics and and different sides of things just aren't where where we need to be focusing our energy.
Yeah, it's, I mean, I respect that take and I think it's, you know, people get asked that a lot and it's really not relevant. I get the, you may want some deeper insight of core values and your stance. But for a position that is nonpartisan, I don't, in my opinion, I don't want it. It should be a part of the conversation.
And I think when people talk about it, it's like they're trying to, and I don't know that they mean this when they're asking, but they're trying to figure out like where they think you're going to vote on a certain thing. And that's just not ever been been the case for us. It's not whether you're, and most time people are talking about Republican or Democrat. It's not about that. It's just about what we need as a city, what we need for the future of our city.
Yeah, that's also an interesting point with like the Republican versus Democrat and the true parties. Like if you hear those things, you typically think of stances that are happening at the federal level. But those are not the decisions that are being made at the city level. So it's very different.
Yeah, I don't know how to politicize from that standpoint, the decisions that that we make on the commission. It's not, it's not about that. It's just about city Manhattan.
Yeah. Okay, and then so you've been a commissioner for a year. And so obviously you're seeking reelection. And so your time as a commissioner must have been positive or something that you feel like you want to continue to do because you're continuing to run. So what about being in a commission seat makes you want to do it again?
So it has been overall positive. You know, a lot of the decisions that we're making, most of the time they're fairly black and white. There's a pretty good criteria. We're evaluating things. Sometimes what is difficult is the reaction that people have, the decisions. And it is really easy to to let yourself go down a rabbit hole and get kind of eaten up by what other people are saying about you. But the fact that I feel like I am making decisions that are impacting Manhattan positively in the future, I want to continue doing that. I feel like we're on this path and this momentum and we're making these decisions. We've got economic development going. We've got housing going. We're making all of these strides and I don't want to see that go away, which is really why I'm like, I need to keep doing this so that we can continue that that vision.
Yeah. And so now you are running a campaign. And the first time you went through the appoint, being appointed, you have a really unique position of, your first experience versus this experience. So what's it like now running a campaign for the first time, but you're in a commission seat?
It is very different experience. The appointment was at the time felt very overwhelming, trying to get everything done in this short amount of time. It, it still feels very overwhelming, but just for a longer period of time, which is not the most helpful. Like you said, it's, there's a lot of guilt associated with like not getting enough done from the campaign standpoint. And it's not about me. Like if this was just about me, I wouldn't be doing any of this. I wouldn't be out there campaigning because it's, it's not about me. It's about setting up Manhattan better for the future. And so I'm out there and have to like always remind myself, it's about like keeping going what we've been doing and needing to be there to make that happen, or that's not going to happen. So it's, it's a lot right now. You know, wanting to be conservative with our funds that we have, but also understanding it does cost a significant amount of money from mailers to yard signs to, you know, some people will do different ads, those sort of things. There, there's a lot that goes into it that I never really thought before. Even things like we had a booth at Purple Power Play and that costs money. Costs money to buy the candy, you know, all of those things. So.
Yeah, it's, it seems like a pretty easy task when you think about it on the surface of like, oh, I just need to get my name in front of people. But you're talking about 50,000 people. I actually don't know the population of Manhattan. I just speak in a group.
You're right there. And but then it boils down to like, who actually is going to vote on these years, the odd years? It's not a significant voter turnout. So we'd love more voters out there just to to make sure everyone has a voice because a lot of people choose not to use theirs. And that's a choice. People don't have to vote if they don't want to. But trying to get to individuals, trying to encourage people to vote and come out and and make your stance. Say what you want to say.
And you're getting closer to, we're what, like two months out? Forget September.
Yeah, I have a friend that keeps texting us every day with how many days we are until early voting. And every time I'm like, that just gives us more anxiety. And also we are closer to the finish line.
So does, things are ramping up now compared to when you filed by June?
So we started door knocking and there, there's a group of us who are kind of door knocking and helping each other out in that and trying to have more appearances where we maybe wouldn't have. Like Purple Power Play, I wouldn't have thought about having a booth there. But so we're doing more of that. Some of it's just the normal things we always do. It is, it is something trying to be, let people know that you're not just at something for the campaign. So for instance, I've always gone to the military relations luncheons and we have one tomorrow. And so going to that and most people will say like, oh, how's the campaign? You know, they're coming up and asking that, but I never want to put that out in front of people and make them think that's the only reason I'm, I'm talking to them. It definitely does come up. And so I try to be very intentional when I'm campaigning, I'm campaigning. And when I'm doing commission stuff, I'm doing commission stuff, but those lines get very blurred. And when I'm working, I'm working.
Yeah. And for door knocking, has that been a positive experience? Has there been any part of your campaign that you feel like you haven't been greeted positively? Or is it always been?
No, I mean, if I were to look on Facebook and take deep dives, I think that there's probably some, some negative comments that are going to come from that. And I understand it, like there's not everything any one person does that we are going to agree with fully or speak up and support it. But from door knocking, we door knocked this weekend and talked to people and overall had a really great experience. I think people were excited to see that we were coming around and talking to people. You know, a lot of people are like, thank you for the info or, or, you know, it, some people don't answer the door, which is fine. It's one thing I feel like with door knocking, like I don't want to be intrusive. I don't want to ruin what somebody has going on or interrupt their day. And so I have to remind myself, like, people can choose to not answer the door and that's great. And I'll leave some info and kind of continue on. But so far, everybody's been very well, like been very kind, polite, well-received. It started raining this weekend on us. And so somebody's like, come inside. And I was like, okay, I'm sorry. And then, you know, you do your like, this is who I am and things. So yeah, people have been very kind.
Yeah, that's great. And so I've, this is the question I've been most excited to ask you.
Okay, I'm ready.
So when you filed for commission in, so Manhattan Brewing Company did a collab with them and you had a beer called The Commish.
Yes.
How do you get a beer? And that, it sounds like a really great experience.
It was, it was really cool. So the guys at Manhattan Brewing Company are awesome. So this started, I had crashed somebody's party that they're having at Manhattan Brewing Company. Some friends were there and they invited us over. And one of my friends, Heather, she was like, you should do a beer. And the guy was like, you should do a beer. And so then I followed up with them. My friends jokingly called me The Commish and I was like, you know what? Let's go for it. Let's lean into it. And so I reached out and they had some options. You can like make your own or you can relabel a different beer. And then worked with the team at Switch Wicked and they came up with a great design for me. And then, yeah, we, we launched a beer and we still have some left. We're going to keep using them. We wanted to keep them all. But yeah, it was, it's a fun way. I think supporting small business was really important to us and wanting to do that. And I'm an advocate for the Common Consumption Area downtown. So there, there were a lot of things that that fit in with me and just thought, let's try some a little different.
Yeah. Did you get to pick the type of beer then?
I did. So I, I'm a sour beer fan. And I do think there was kind of a funny play on like city commissioner and kind of being sour. It was a pink lemonade sour. And so, yeah, they, I got to pick that. I did not do the fully like make our own. I just said like, ooh, I really like this one. And they, they let, they let us do that and make a new label for it. So.
Yeah. Is it still available or?
No, I kept them all because we're going to keep using them. We've got some other campaign parties coming up and so wanted to keep doing that. And also like for nostalgia, I wanted to have some. I think my, my parents very sweetly bought like four packs of them just to keep them at home. And but yeah, so we have them all and they'll probably make another appearance soon.
Yeah, that's really cool. I do love a good sour. So if they make a public appearance, I'll be first in line to buy one.
I'll get you one.
So you have now been in an elected position for almost a year. What is one thing you wish more people, like the public, knew about being in an elected position?
Oh, this is probably going to, the first thing that comes to my mind. So this might sound a little, I don't want to say bitter, but that, like we are people. I think people forget that we're human beings and we also live in this community. But we did sign up for what we were doing. So I understand like the criticism and those things. I think. I think I I wish people would, maybe this is going a little bit off the question or yeah, off the topic. I wish people, especially those who who might know me or have some sort of connection, but really anybody would reach out more and discuss their thoughts and opinions on something and ask the questions. It is, it is a little hurtful when I see that people I know are posting things on Facebook that I'm like, oh, you could have asked me and I could have clarified that. And like, let's talk about what your opinions are, because maybe you can shed some light on something that like I'm not considering. We don't, we aren't all knowing beings. I mean, we, we come with, you know, we do our research, we do our due diligence as much as we can, but if people don't bring things to us and bring up points to us, it it is hard for us to make the the decision that people want. Well, that's not true. We are making decisions. It just may not be considering factors if somebody didn't bring them up.
Yeah. And one of the things that I've heard, and I've obviously never been in that position, so I don't know for sure, but it seems like I'm constantly being told when I'm asking for feedback for this initiative, that you may want to be able to do something, but you have to convince four other people that this is the right move and this is why. And so you may still be advocating for something, but it may not be seen publicly just because there's more that happens behind the scenes and people may.
There's a lot of that. And so there's kind of this like, you know, there's a a rule and it's like, you have to count to three because you typically to make something happen, you have to have three votes, not everything. But some of the things, so for instance, before common consumption came out, like there was a lot of background work, like the first time we're seeing something is not necessarily at that meeting, but we're having these discussions. One thing that actually a friend of mine suggested with CECO that's coming up, we're doing renovations on CECO. When that happened, that took the ball fields out of commission. Sorry. Out of use, but also the CECO fields were generally left open to the public. Yes, you could reserve them, but if not, they were still open. So we took those four out of circulation now. And so there's a request and a good suggestion, I thought, that that came through a friend that I deal, like, I wish I would have thought of this, but it's like, why can't Twin Oaks be open? So those are, those are the fields at Annburg Park. And so those are conversations I'm having behind the scenes with city staff of like, tell me what, what are the concerns? How can we work through this? What? What are we doing? Why is this not there? And there's always kind of more to that story, more to consider in all of it. But just because it's not out front, doesn't mean that we're not working on things. So yeah, there there's a lot.
Yeah. And to kind of circle back on the other point you made of like reaching out and talking to you. Again, I've just cold emailed every, all of the candidates and everything and everybody has responded. And so it's really not that difficult to get in touch, but it seems like there's just some sort of invisible barrier that if you just send an email or call or, you know, it does seem like everybody does want to sit down and.
We, we very much, and I prefer like face to face interactions with people. I am not the most well written person. And actually, right now, we're having to like type out a lot of responses to things. And that's challenging because like, you know, to me, just having like a one sided response to a question, it, that's not creating change. That's not creating discussion. That's not creating a chance to really talk through and get all the points across that that either person is trying to make. So it's really hard for me when somebody emails me and just, you know, wants me to answer point blank questions. And I usually let them know like, hey, written communication is not my favorite. I'll I'll give you this stab, but like would love to sit down with coffee or have a phone conversation. But a lot of these people email us, there are times when we get hundreds of emails and then I could say probably in the last month, I've gotten on commission things, like as an acting, sitting city commissioner, maybe five in the last month have I gotten from a citizen saying, here's something. You know, so sometimes it's hard to respond to every single one of them. And I know some of my other colleagues, they do a really great job at it. If somebody's asking a question, I usually try to address that. A lot of times it's like, don't do this. And that's like the the whole context to something. And one thing that has actually really surprised me and and actually hope I get get more emails about this and people wanting to talk, that people will email me and say whatever. I had somebody email me and was like, you're a waste of a person and and not, not the nicest things. And so my response was like, happy to have a conversation, like here's my phone number. And I, I mean, I have like my personal cell number, here's that. And we'll never hear from people again. Like, most of the time when people email us and we send a response, we don't, we don't get a dialogue. We don't get a conversation. And that can be a little disheartening, but that doesn't mean that we stop doing it. We still have to keep doing our part.
Yeah, that definitely dives into deeper of, there's a person on the other side of that. And like, what's your intention in sending this and the depths of social media and all of that stuff. So. And then kind of on the flip side of that, what's one thing that you wish more people knew about running a campaign?
The, it is, well, I mean, I said earlier that running a campaign, it is expensive. That we are not personally benefiting from any of that. If anything, like I'm spending more money to do that. So there are personal components of it. I think in general, I'd like people to know from a commission standpoint too. We hear a lot of people like, oh, I bet they're lying in their pockets with that. Like we, as a commissioner, we make $6,000 a year, which is not nothing. So I don't want to say that that, I don't want to say that that's, that's not something, but really that's covering our gas to get to things and and the amount of time that we're spending doing things. But from the the campaign perspective, it's a lot of work. And if you're running a campaign, there's no way to ever do it all. And it does take a team and it takes support and it, I'm trying to learn to be more open to to people willing to help because I definitely don't want to make anyone feel like they have to do something for me. But so trying to take the help when it's offered has been, been, that would be my like advice to people is.
Yeah, the money thing is interesting because I also didn't know until a few months ago, like the school board's not a paid position. City commission, you get a stipend if you want to call it that. But yeah, again, you're not making money off of it and you're dedicating, you're taking time away from your family to run a campaign, show up to the meetings, those types of things. And so it's just kind of an interesting perception that that's the way that people view it. And we, to be honest, like I probably would have viewed it that way if you'd asked me about it six months ago before talking to people. And it's just an interesting thing that that's not more well known that like you're really not making money off of this and you're probably losing money.
We are. I would say we spend about 20 hours a week on commission related items. Fortunately, I work for an organization that that is flexible with my time. And so you said, sometimes I'm working on my work, my Metal Arc work at home on the couch or I'm having, you know, it it's not, you know, I don't have to have just between these hours. But it it's a lot of time commitment and very appreciative of any kind of stipend. And and I think the majority of us, I know I would do it with with no stipend, but I think that long term, that is not getting individuals who can really have an impact to do it because it it takes a lot of dedicated time.
Yeah, you still have to support your family and put food on your feet and all this things.
That's what if I, if if my son wasn't a teenager and able to like really, I can't say fully take care of himself because we still do all of the reminders of everything, but it would be a different story and I I wouldn't be able to to be a commissioner.
And then I have one more question and then we'll go into the last three questions. I ask everybody to wrap it up. But is there anything that you would like people to know about you before they head to the polls?
You know, I think related to my campaign and just related to how I am in life, I am very interested in our future. That is my number one thing is that we have to make, be making future focused decisions. And I'm very involved in our youth because we're trying to leave things better than we found it, trying to get our youth more engaged. I want our youth to stay. And so you know, we can't support every single thing that comes. I can't be involved in everything. And I've spent my time prioritizing our youth and and being involved with youth activities.
Okay. And then the last three questions that I ask everybody, do you remember the first time you voted?
Yes.
What was that like?
I do. I was a senior in high school because I have a September birthday and so I turned 18. And I remember being super excited and we had shirts made. I won't tell you who we voted for or what they said, but we had shirts made and so we were all very excited. And that was, it worked out well because I I think just completed like US government was the social studies for junior or when you're a junior in high school. And so very like motivated to get out and vote.
And why is voting important to you?
You know, I think that's, I think everyone will say it's why, it's how we have our voices. It's one way that we can do that. And it's something like, if you're not willing to participate, I think there is a a thought of then do you get to have a say? And this is how we can have a say. And each vote really does matter. It it counts. And we've seen locally, a lot of elections won or lost by just a handful of votes.
Yeah, I was actually talking to Jamie Morris Hardeman, who was talking about how her seat was lost in a coin toss.
Yep. I think there's been three different ones in recent history where they in locally were, yeah, won or lost by a coin toss, which is very efficient. And so I applaud the efficiencies of that, but also, also a scary reality.
Yeah. So go to the polls. It matters.
It really does.
And how can people find you?
Well, you can find me this Thursday. I'll be at, well, Anthony Middle School football game. So that's always a good one to find me, but I'm at Metal Arc. I'm on Facebook. I have a Facebook page personally and then Mitten for Manhattan. My phone email, I've got my city phone and email. There's lots of ways to to get ahold of me. So I just ask that people don't, don't hold back. Come see me. I am always happy to talk about the city of Manhattan, even if that's while I'm at work, while I'm at my kid's game and stuff. Now, if he's like in the game, I'm going to pause and like watch what's going on, but I am, I am more than happy I, to talk about Manhattan. I love talking about Manhattan. It is something that since I've been here for 20 years, I've, I've just found a passion for our community.
Great. And I'll leave us with, you can follow us on our social media pages for announcements for new episodes. You can follow the podcast page at Politics Not Included, Transparent Campaigns at Transparent. Wow, okay, Transparent Campaigns. And then Facebook is Transparent Campaign Initiative. And for more information on the Manhattan City Commission election coming up, you can visit our website at transparentcampaigns.org. Jamie, thanks for joining.
Thank you. This was great. I enjoyed it.